Welcome. Good evening. I call to order our regular council meeting for May 5th, 2025. Before we start, I do want to remind everyone to silence your phones or put them on vibrate so that we don't have distractions with a room full of people. The potential is for that to happen and we want to be able to keep moving our meeting forward. So with that, I will ask for the roll call.
Blessam?
Here.
Fuller?
Janser?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Pittner?
Here.
Samuelson?
Here.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will pass by Agenda Item Number Three as there is not a Mayor's Report this evening, and go on to Agenda Item Number Four, and we'll start with the City Manager's Report.
Good evening, members of council. First and foremost, I just wanted to see if there was any questions with regards to the City Manager Report that's included as part of the packet. Not seeing or hearing any, there are a couple of recognitions and then an update that I would like to provide the council this evening. First of all, I'd like to publicly recognize our visit Minot Executive Director Stephanie Shane-Roch. Last week, Minot hosted the North Dakota Travel and Tourism Conference, and at that conference, there were several Governor's Awards that were handed out, which included Mrs. Shane-Roch receiving the Governor's Travel Industry Legend Award. And so, I think it speaks to the quality of leadership here that we have in our community, helping make Minot better every day. And I just wanted to congratulate her on receiving that award. I'm going to turn some time over to our Assistant City Manager, Tom Joyce, who has an employee recognition. And then when he's concluded, I have Chris Plank and Representative CDM Smith to provide the council an update on some of the acquisitions that we're having with regards to flood control projects.
All right, Mr. Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart, Acting Mayor Janser, members of council. I'd just like to bring up one of our HR professionals today, Brittany Thurston. Brittany was recently recognized by the North Dakota Safety Council as an Emerging Safety Champion. For the last 18 months, Brittany has led the city's safety management program, gathering significant data about workplace injuries and implementing preventative measures to combat safety issues. Her positive attitude and energy have significantly increased safety awareness across the entire staff. She was specifically called out for assisting the Water Department in arranging much-needed confined space excavation and trench safety training. We are proud to have Brittany on our team and keeping us all safe. So with that, I'd appreciate if all of you would join me in a round of applause for Brittany and her great job she's doing for us.
Acting Mayor Janser and members of council, just wanted to give a brief update on some of the acquisitions that we have going on. As many of you know, we have some acquisitions that we have. One, we're dealing with Parkview Trailer Park right now. I'm happy to report that all residents have been relocated and anybody who is eligible for the relocation assistance that has been received, and they have found other places to reside. So we're moving forward with Parkford Trailer Park on that aspect of it. I do have Steve Wolfsfeld here from CDM Smith to provide an update on the acquisitions for MI4 and also a couple of the acquisitions for the MI8 project. So I'll turn it over to Steve.
Acting Mayor Janser, council and city manager, I just want to give a quick update as to the acquisitions in MI4 and MI8. We have 13 total properties that we're acquiring in those two areas right now. We've held acquisition offer meetings for two of the 13. We have nine additional meetings scheduled to take place Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Monday of next week. So over the next four working days, we'll get nine of them completed. And then the last two are a commercial property and an apartment complex that are a little more detailed. So that's going to be acquired. The offer meeting for those will be done next week. So, we had some delays in getting some of the acquisition stuff here put together, but we have worked through that in the last two weeks, and I think we've caught back up to where we need to be and where we feel good about the acquisition progress. Any questions?
Alderman Blessam?
Yeah, thank you for the update. So can you give me just a little bit more information about how the delays occur? So, the timeline, as I understood it, when we made the decision in November, especially on MI4, the properties that were going to be acquired were told at that point that they were going to receive information in January. That didn't occur, as far as I know. In fact, as far as I am aware, there was no communication made whatsoever to those property owners until at least April 13th. And so, can you help me understand the delay and how that happens? And really, for me, as a new council member, as we go into additional acquisitions, if needed, for properties, I need to be assured of what's going to happen. Because when I talk to property owners, which I did in this case, I talked to nearly every one of them, what I told them was, "This may not be a happy time for you, but you will be treated well." And for me, this is not being treated well. So can you please comment on that?
Yeah, absolutely. We had a combination of issues that caused the delays. Some of the appraisal, the appraisal process, we had minor delays with that kind of extended things out. We had issues with the environmentals getting approved. That took, we didn't really get the environmental approvals in until like mid-March, end of March. And then, you know, also, you know, we at CDM Smith here, our acquisition team shoulders some of the blame for not pushing these things through as expeditiously as we should. And I agree with you 100%. You know, your constituents deserve top-notch communication, and I believe we've rectified some of the things that led to these delays, and they will not be happening again in the future.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. We move on to the City Attorney's Report.
Madam Chair and Council, I've submitted a written report, and I can stand for any questions at this time.
Seeing none, we will move on. Thank you, City Attorney. We will move into the public hearing part of our agenda. And before we start that, I just want to thank all of you for being here tonight. It's great to have a room full of people. That means that you are watching our agendas, you are concerned, you want us to hear your voice, and we're going to give everyone that opportunity tonight. But I want to set a few guidelines in place so that the first speaker is heard just as loud and clear as the last speaker, whenever that is, as our agenda comes to an end tonight. So here are a few pointers or guidelines that we are going to follow tonight. So using Robert's Rule of Order as our guide, everyone should remember that public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to inform the governing body about their views. The meeting in which public comments are allowed still is run by the governing body with clear, concise guidelines in place. The chair will determine if the comments are outside of the purview of this meeting. Unless otherwise specified, public comment is considered a one-way communication. It is not intended to serve as a debate or a question-and-answer period. For tonight's meeting, public comment from any one person is limited to five minutes. A stopwatch will be viewable on the screens. If the governing body wishes to extend the time a speaker is given, an affirmative vote must be taken. A speaker's time may not be yielded to another speaker. The unused time from a speaker is transferred back to the governing body. Comments should be related to a topic that falls under the authority of this governing body. Campaigning for any political office or specific candidate is not acceptable. And comments with the same sentiment or belief should be kept concise to allow for the meeting to move forward efficiently. I think if we can follow all of those, we'll have a great meeting tonight. So, Mr. City Engineer, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Got it. Thank you for letting me present to you tonight. Before your public hearing, I wanted to provide a little bit of background information for primarily the public. You've already seen all this information at our council workshop here a few weeks ago. So what I plan on doing is just giving a little background, let you conduct a public hearing, and then if there's any follow-up questions or actions that you want us to take on, we will address that. And then, at the mid-May council meeting, we'll bring back the final capital improvement plan based on any public comment or council actions. So, shown here in the screen is a breakdown of the total capital improvement plan, or CIP for short. Total plan, when you add up all the different funding sources, is $955.2 million over the five-year period, starting in '26 to 2030. You can see here the different department breakdowns and how those costs are allocated throughout the CIP. This screen here shows the funding level for the next five years as drafted. Obviously, our goal is to try to level out or keep those funding amounts about the same every year. It helps us when we do budgeting and things like that. Obviously, the flood control project and its phases will somewhat dictate how we're able to do that. If you look at the different funding sources that the city might not uses, it's primarily federal and state funds with sales tax. So about almost two-thirds of our funding comes from state and federal sources. Some changes that we took away from the council workshop that we had, our police station project was re-scoped the best that we could with the information that we have, and we reduced it to an onsite remodel of the existing building. So it wouldn't include any additions. It's basically just kind of like what we did here at City Hall. It's replacing the systems that had to be replaced. With that, obviously, comes a lot of other construction that's necessary, like replacing ceilings or floors or moving some walls around potentially. Obviously, those decisions are still up to city council, but to try to help scope this, we've reduced as much as we think we can at this point without getting into an architectural effort to work through that scope. The wastewater treatment plant, we took the construction funding out of that and replaced it with engineering only, and this would be for the full contract amount preliminary through construction engineering. Right now, because it's five years away, we haven't scoped this out, so we're just using a 10% estimate at this time. And then some closing points here. Our CIP is largely driven by the flood control project. So, about almost 60% of the total CIP is within that one project. We have several projects that are shown in the CIP for planning purposes, or were put in there by council directions, so those projects are holding in there. They may not be funded when it comes time to allocating resources in the city's budget. The city spends about $15 million a year on infrastructure maintenance. Those costs are not included in the capital improvement plan. They're kept separate. And finally, like we had talked at our workshop, we're looking for the direction so that we can assemble these projects, and then if necessary, start the engineering process on them. So, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice President, council, I'll leave you with that, and if there's any comments or anything that we need to address after the public hearing, be happy to help you with that.
Thank you. So now is the public's opportunity to come forward and share your comments with us. Remember, you'll have five minutes to speak. You can come in, tell us whether you're in favor of the project or not in favor, or just any comments available. So, I'm open to having the first speaker come forward.
President Olson, council members, Josh Wolsky, thank you for the opportunity to share a couple of brief comments tonight. For the last many years, the Ann Street Bridge has been a part of a larger community conversation. I don't know if there is intention to consider that as a part of this project or the capital improvement plan tonight. I just, I want to share and remind everybody that on the north side of the Burlington Northern Railroad tracks, we have nearly 14 acres that are in the process, I'm not exactly sure, but likely to be acquired for flood protection, and a potential bridge project is what provides access to that potential area. It's also a bit of a catch-22 situation. If projects are removed from capital improvement plans, it greatly reduces our opportunity to seek funding for them. So, it doesn't cost anything to leave this project in place, and it leaves a door open for securing whatever opportunities might exist in the future. So, I just wanted to share that perspective. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Next speaker, if there is one. One more opportunity for anyone to come forward and give us public comment on the CIP. Seeing none, what are the council's wishes?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any comments from the council? Seeing none, call the roll.
The motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to Item 5.2, which is a public hearing for the Chapter 5 Alcohol Beverages Ordinance. And before we start with public input, I'm going to turn it over to Alderman Pittner, who has chaired that committee for an update.
Thank you, old woman, Madam Vice President Olson. So before we get into this, again, I understand we're going to open the public hearing, and I just want to, Alderman Samuelson had emailed me last week with some questions that were coming from some of the establishment owners and the general public. So, knowing that we're going to have quite a bit of public input on this, I just want to maybe answer some of those questions for the public record. I know it was emailed out to everyone up here at the dais, so wanted to kind of go through these, just to kind of give some background. I think it provides good insight. They're good questions, provides good insight to the committee work. So, the first question was, "What is the motivation behind removing the cap?" The answer is, "There's no motivation behind this conversation." The council at a meeting that I was not in attendance at voted to put together a review committee of the ordinance versus contracting this out with outside counsel. A committee was formed, and through this exercise, the topic of caps came up, as it has in the past. The committee had lengthy discussions on this topic, and this is why we came up with a couple of different options to proceed with removing the cap. To Alderman Blessam's point, "We do not restrict any other types of businesses, and there are still very strict guidelines and laws in place to regulate these types of establishments." Next question was, "Who has been behind this change?" My response was, "I can see where this question is coming from, as we dealt with this at the committee level as well." Two members have been accused of pushing this, one of them being committee member Kevin Black. The background on this is that Kevin was not an original member of this committee, but rather, the owner, Mr. Hoffman, from the original bar nightclub, was appointed and withdrew after our first meeting. It was me, as the committee chair, who reached out to Kevin, since Kevin was familiar with supper club licenses, as well as being a good business mind and heavy investor in Minot, I felt like he would give a very insightful perspective into this work. I've been very grateful for Kevin's input into this committee, and I feel bad that he's been very openly accused of being motivated for self-interest. The other member that has been heavily accused of pushing this has been me. At one of our meetings, owner of the drop zone and former city employee openly accused me of wanting to do this for my own business ventures, to which I will say that I fully support a motion that states, "I, Paul Pittner, can never hold a City of Minot liquor, beer, and wine license." Next question was, "Why, with Minot's population stagnant or declining over the last 10 years, why now?" I respond, "Again, this committee was formed for the direction of council. At the end of the day, I don't believe population should be a determining factor on whether or not a business can operate. I believe in free markets and competition. When businesses are forced to compete, they do, and they do not have the protection of a cap, and they have protection of the cap, that prevents competition in the marketplace. They must compete. They must compete with customer service quality and price at the end of the day, when the case is of no caps, and the consumer benefits." Another question was, which, again, these were all considered at the committee level, "Do we need a bar nightclub on every corner?" My response is, "There's nothing to suggest or support this as a realistic outcome of an ordinance change. Some license holders at our meetings have suggested the bar industry is not what it used to be, to the point, I can't imagine there being a rush of new bars. When we issued the most recent round of licenses after the census, then Mayor Sean Seppa made the comment along the lines of, "When Grand Forks removed their cap, there was no rush of bars that opened. Grand Forks realized that their cap number was very close to what their community was able and willing to support," end quote. To which I responded, "That is the point. The community, the consumers, the citizens voted with their dollars on who is successful, not a group of politicians." The next question was, "Is this what we want Minot known for?" And my response was, "If when you say known for, you mean pro-business, pro-innovation, pro-entrepreneurship, pro-growth policy, I unequivocally respond yes. There are still numerous barriers and risks to operating and owning a bar, and other communities that have done this have not seen this so-called rush that has always been threatened." The next question was, "Why the need to pay out hundreds of thousands of tax dollars for changes residents and the owners don't want?" My response was, "According to the legal opinion received from outside counsel, we do not need to pay out anything, but rather, this is an attempt to work with license holders to find an amicable resolution to move forward. In reality, these licenses have been owned, and the value has been realized and ensured to close market for years to the benefit of owners." Next question was, "Will there not be, need to be larger police presence than Minot?" And the committee, again, the committee considered all of these things. Again, I think this is under the assumption that you have this contingency of people waiting to take on the immense headache expense and risk of owning and operating a bar. The committee did not believe this to be the case. We have made server training mandatory for bartenders and servers. We have made compliance checks a priority, as well as stiffer penalties for infractions and noncompliance, to hopefully reduce the issues we've even had with some of our existing establishments and possible new ones. At the end of the day, my comments are that I believe in the free market deregulation and removing red tape when possible. This is an asset that should be owned by the citizens. And again, that'll conclude my comments. I just know that that's going to be some of the rhetoric that we hear tonight. I wanted to get that out, because those are all questions and concerns that the committee has considered throughout this process. And again, I will turn it back over to the chair and move on.
Thank you. So now is your opportunity to come forward and speak to us about the ordinance, potential ordinance changes. And again, we'll limit you to five minutes, so first person may come forward. Please share your name with us.
Richard Napol, owner of the Ranger Lounge.
And if you can speak into the mic, it'll help us.
Richard Napol, owner of the Ranger Lounge.
Thank you.
I understand that what you spoke of, a free market, is a wonderful thing. I totally agree with this to start with, but I don't believe it should come at the expense of somebody else. I'll say that as well. There was something said the other day, I'll grab my glasses, I forgot my glasses, sorry, that was, said, "The outside attorney does bring back an opinion that states you can remove the cap, and you do not need to provide any sort of compensation to the current license holders." Now with that clarity and that legal green light, the committee's work resumed. Now, what was actually said in the memorandum that Katie Schmidt from Onsted Twitchell sent to the city on July 18th of last year, was, she said, "Although courts have yet to consider the removal of a limitation on the number of liquor licenses, they have considered the removal of similar caps." Now, that first part of it just says, "Although courts have yet to consider the removal of the limitation on these," right? To me, that's uncharted territory. I mean, we haven't gotten into this by far. And those similar caps that she listed in those are grazing permits against the U.S. Forest Service, import licenses of weapons importer, a peanut quota, and perhaps the closest we get to this is the Minnesota tax, taxi cab medallion licenses. I believe that, we touch on really, we're in the hunt there, but even there, not a liquor license. She goes on in the conclusion to say, "There are no cases on point," again to me, meaning uncharted territory, unexplored waters. Those similar case, sorry, and those items I listed were all Supreme Court cases. They went to the Supreme Court of these, considered of the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments, which we've all heard and talked about, right, obviously. Again, this to me does not say a legal green light. This to me, at best, says perhaps a yellow light, meaning, "Slow down a little bit, cautionary tale," right? And instead of jamming on the gas and getting through this light, I think we really need to just really look at this. It's not the best to be the first sometimes to do these things. This has not happened. This is uncharted territory, for real. And to me, that kind of leaves out that first option of the no compensation option. And now, next up, I'd like to address the Pittner and Black proposals, which, I get it, a lot of time, a lot of care, and a lot of effort went into these. I take nothing away from these. At first glance, I thought I liked them both. And the more I talk to people, not just bar owners, I mean, everyone, the Pittner proposal would be at great expense to, obviously, to taxpayer. I mean, we're talking $900,000 on that first $25,000 per bar owner, if it's 36 licenses, I forget exactly how many there are, but that's $900,000. Over the next 20 years, it's over $3 million if you're giving that $5,000. And again, I didn't mind this at first, I loved it, but the more I talked to people and the more I learned, I kind of went, "Oh, that's tough." The Black proposal, while that takes away, again, right away, the initial expense of taxpayers from John Q. Public, it does actually leave a little place for litigation in there, say, he was off, I think it was $150,000, if I remember right, to the city to sell those licenses. If I'm wrong, it's by- If I'm wrong, it's by-
I think it was, he left the window there open for the council to decide, yep.
Okay, but say somebody's paid $210,000 for their license, and they could prove that, you're still open for litigation in here, in some way, somehow, which again, goes back to taxpayer expense, because litigation costs money. We all know this, we've been there. Well, not all of us, but some. And with those two, three proposals gone out the window, I believe the only real one left is the status quo. We leave it as it is, we have, we cut our losses of time and money spent, and wait till there's actually something that has happened in, for somewhere else, to let them, I hate to pass the buck, but, hmm, you know. And removing this cap, I believe, would have consequences that I don't believe have been fully comprehended, because it's tough to know, because it is uncharted territory. It's not, it's not known. Rather than, and like most proposed legislation, designed solely to stimulate economic growth, rather than remedy an actual public need, I think those consequences have not been realized yet by this counsel. Eight seconds, thank you.
Next speaker?
President Olson, council members, thank you for this opportunity. I have some prepared remarks tonight, but I know that they are going to go a little bit longer than the five minutes, and I applaud that limit. So I'm going to kind of truncate on the fly here as best I can. I've been passionate about this issue for a very long time, and it stems to the 10 years I spent in Charleston, South Carolina. It was a place where I witnessed firsthand what can happen in a open environment as far as licenses go. And in the time I was in Charleston, it came from the point of being a city on the cusp with some beautiful old bones, to literally one of the world's top tourist destinations. And it was in part the food and beverage business that drove that change. And it was an open environment where, in which bars and restaurants had the opportunity to invest. And as a part of that investment, they did a remarkable service to that community in redeveloping considerable old and in-need properties. So I have been in an environment, and I've witnessed firsthand what can emerge when the regulatory barriers are removed. With that in mind, and that informing the past, I do think our circumstances in North Dakota in particular have changed. In the past, I was very passionate about removing caps, because again, this is a removal of a barrier for entrepreneurs and creative businesses. But what's changed in North Dakota since the last time we had this conversation in 2016 and 17 is the rise of charitable gaming, and specifically, the legalization of e-tab machines. In 2019, charitable gaming was approximately a $200 million a year business statewide. Today, that number is closer to $2.2 billion. This is a tenfold increase. And if you're not familiar with the way the gaming works, there is a significant incentive to add e-tab machines into facilities. And it's roughly this, for each dollar that goes into an e-tab machine, 90 cents of that gets paid back out. There is an additional 4 cents of that dollar that will typically go back to the charitable cause or the interest of the community. 3 cents will typically go towards the administrative costs, and 3 cents will typically go directly to the gaming distributor, the maker of those machines. So every time somebody touches one of those buttons, puts a dollar in one of those machines, they make 3 cents. This is an enormous incentive for these businesses. And if we remove caps, I believe we will see a proliferation in gaming site requests, because this profit incentive is, it's just too extraordinary. And we've witnessed this, we have the data to confirm that there is an enormous desire to enter this market. So with that in mind, my position on caps has evolved somewhat. And I heard the concerns of the council at the last meeting. I do appreciate and support an open regulatory environment. I'm not a fan of the city shelling out dollars, either in actual money today or discounted future renewal fees. I think that's a precedent that we don't have to set. I think there is a, actually, a very elegant path forward in this situation. And it is to simply shift the cap. And rather than limit the number of licensed alcohol establishments, we simply shift that full retail liquor license type, and we designate that as the only license type that is available for a full gaming spread, which is to say, these are the only establishments that can have e-tab machines and table games. This preserves the value for those existing license owners. And, or, if they are not fully capitalized or taking advantage of the gaming opportunities, they can divest with the creation of a couple new license types, which is part two. So part one is, we cap casinos, not alcohol licenses. Part two, we add new license types that allow the sale of liquor, either in an off-sale or an on-sale form. I am, for purposes of speaking tonight, just calling it a tavern license and an off-sale license. This allows new entrepreneurs to enter the market with creative business ideas, and, but preserves the value for the existing license holders. So those are the two core concepts. And President Olson, if you'll indulge me for just probably another 30 seconds or minute, I'll be able to wrap this up very quickly.
One minute, yes.
The policy specifics of these two ideas would require a much larger conversation. We're going to have to work out some mechanical details and some policy details. But I'm very confident that inside this framework, there is an opportunity to satisfy the interests of the city at large, as well as everybody sitting behind me who has an existing interest in a license. With that said, there is one element of this larger conversation that I do think we really truly need to consider as a community, which is the removal of this defeasible property clause in our existing license structure and ordinance. This idea that a liquor license is property has spurred much of the contention in this debate and is not serving us well. We need to reorient this entire policy framework around the idea of a business privilege, rather than a property entitlement. In practice, this is a semantic shift only. Licenses would remain transferable. Business owners would absolutely be able to capture the value of their going interests when they choose to move on to their next venture. But the shift in thinking is significant. If you're not sure, ask yourself, when deciding the fate of an irresponsible license holder, is there a difference between revoking a privilege and taking away a property? Taking away a property is something that everybody would hesitate on. But revoking a privilege is a decision that we would look at in the interest of our larger community. And that is what I think this policy should serve. It is the larger interest of the community. I think there is an opportunity in front of you as you consider this issue. And there's a pathway forward to serve all the interests, which is to open us up to new concepts, new businesses, and maintain value for the existing license holders. So thank you for the additional time and the opportunity to speak tonight.
Next speaker?
Tony Mueller, Sports on Tap. I just wrote a couple of things down in order to be concise and save some time. The three other major comparable cities in North Dakota either have caps or barriers of entry. If option four passes, Minot would look drastically different from our comparable cities, unless the council wants Minot to go back to the old little Chicago ways. To me, the alcohol committee, it was transparent and it wasn't at the same time. I think to all of us bar owners, the mayor just didn't wake up one day and start wanting to have this conversation about why were certain licenses capped. Certain folks wanted this change, just like certain folks wanted this change back in 2016. In those committee meetings, I attended a few. We wasted some time talking about property taxes, hotel licenses, and all sorts of other stuff. But in my opinion, that committee was brought together strictly to try to remove this cap. Evidence of that is, this is the only thing that came from those, that committee. A good example, Mr. Walski just spoke of it, was the fact that the license that I hold is the exact same license that Cashwise Liquor has. To me, that doesn't make any sense. Why does a liquor store, on-sale, off-sale? Those should be two separate licenses, and if you, I think that's an easy fix still, maybe open a couple licenses up. But, so who would this benefit? It certainly wouldn't benefit the existing license holders, maybe some citizens who don't love the options that they have now. But since before 2016, when we met about this last time, whether it's the internet or in person, I've never heard anybody in my life say that Minot needs more bars. Just five short years ago, the city set a minimum of $100,000 for the new licenses that were going to be issued based on the last census. And again, five short years later, that that cap might be removed. That doesn't scream, thanks for doing business in Minot. Also, me personally, if I were to somehow know that five years after I built a rooftop outdoor patio in North Dakota, maybe not the smartest choice, that the cap was to be removed, I really highly doubt that I would take that very expensive and risky, make that very expensive and risky choice. Free markets and being open for business is one thing, but there has and probably will always be additional requirements and restrictions surrounding alcohol, and I think that there should be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Jessica Klein here, from Olson and Burns, on behalf of Marketplace Foods and various other license holders tonight. I just wanted to visit with you a little bit about, as you prepare to consider the proposed revisions. I do know the alcohol committee worked hard on this, I went to the meetings. And I know that there are more rewrites done than just this particular stat, or particular ordinance. We are looking tonight for different options during the public hearing. It's my understanding that there might be additional proposals made after the public hearing is closed. But for purposes of tonight, I will be talking about the four that are out. The first, obviously, is to do nothing, and the retail liquor licenses remain as they are. Obviously, the liquor license holders would prefer that option. Two, removing the cap, and then the city will begin to sell the liquor licenses at $5,000. I think Mr. Napol from the Ranger talked a little bit about what would have been my same arguments, and so I would defer to his argument with regard to the legal opinion. The third is the plan proposed by Kevin Black, which summarized, requires the new applicants to pay the City of Minot $100,000 with their regular annual renewal fee. But it allows for the current liquor license owners a right of first refusal that kind of grants them the right to sell and transfer their liquor license. And then the plan proposed by Alderman Pittner, which summarizes, or which summarizes, provides the retail liquor license owners with the $25,000 payment, along with, you know, the waiver of the 20 years of renewal fees. Like I stated, my clients would obviously prefer the caps remain, and we can all go home. But we also want the council to consider the long-term effects of these proposed changes. The, some of the issues with regards to the Black and Pittner proposals. There's many discussions at the committee level regarding a barrier to business, and wanting to remove the caps in order to remove a barrier to business. As you recall, the City of Minot auctioned off four licenses in 2021, ranging from $100,000 to $210,000. Both of the proposals, both Alderman Pittner's and Kevin Black's, would try to keep within that range. But when we're taking these into consideration, the math on this is a little bit tough. It's certainly nice that Alderman Pittner wants to have the current liquor license holders compensated at the outset, and then the renewal fee. You know, I think that that is very creative. The concern in that is just the cost to the city. Paying each license holder an upfront fee of $25,000 in exchange for a waiver that they essentially won't sue the city. In order to make that work, every liquor license holder is going to have to agree to that. Otherwise, you're still open to some level of liability. And under the Black plan, there is really no cost to the city. The other issue is the math aside. When we're talking about the transfer portion of this, most liquor licenses do end up being transferred more than once during a 20-year time period. I mean, as we look just historically around town, I think all of us can look at one establishment and know that there's been multiple owners, but maybe the business has stayed the same. Well, looking at the four proposals in front of us at this point, the proposal from Mr. Black seems to just make more sense. It leaves the price at the market value price that was established by the city in 2021, but removes the caps. And while offering a right of first refusal to attempt, to the potential buyers, it's really a middle-of-the-road approach, where it's not going to cost the city anything, but it's still going to keep that value there for the current holders. Like I said, my clients obviously aren't in favor of removing the caps, and that would be the number one choice in our book. But if that is the direction that the city is headed, and without knowing about any other proposals at this point, our thought process is the Black approach is probably the best. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Hello, Anthony Barrett, I'm the owner of the Drop Zone. Wasn't planning on coming up here to speak, but since I was mentioned, I figure I would come up and just say a few words. When I did speak at the last meeting, I said that I believed you and knowing of your family, or would, should be allowed to have a liquor license, Councilman Pittner. The reason I said that is because it's a not-well-kept secret that you and Mr. Ackerman, Mr. Black, and your family, who owns a business on Main Street, would benefit from the removal of this cap. Instead of having to pay in upwards of, you know, $100,000-plus for a liquor license, or $215,000, I believe, is what Target paid for theirs, you would now drop that down to about $10,000. It's known. Even before another city worker left about a year ago, he dealt with the economic portion of the city, he told us that that's what was going to happen. And that's why this was being pushed before, and why it would be pushed again. Now, I don't know if that's true or not, but it is weird that every time I bring it up to somebody who has something to do with the city, they all seem to know that that is why it's being pushed. Again, I'm not trying to call you out or anything like that. It's just, if this rumor is the rumor that everyone is telling, it seems very hard to believe that it's not true. With that being said, I think just from a transparency thing, obviously, the optics on this don't look great. Maybe you recuse yourself from any vote on this. That way, people know you had, you know, nothing in it for you. And then maybe that would make it a little bit easier for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
From another perspective, my name is Billy Gunderson. Before I became in a wheelchair, I worked as an electrician. I remember asking my boss how to get to a place directions, and he asked me bar their churches. I don't think that we need a city where we count or account for directions by the number of bars that we have. In 2021 January, I was rear-ended by a drunk driver in the state of Maine. He was charged with 20 years, with 15, five suspended, and four more years probation. In January of 2024, Tiana Weeks was hit by a drunk driver. He was charged with two and a half years, the maximum at that time, and still is five years. It will be changed to 10, from a Class C felony to a Class B felony. I do not think that we need more gaming, where that money goes or comes from. The state trooper that wrote up the report, it was 1,600 pages, 400 photos. What is the responsibility of the city council to control the number of bars? Or whether or not it's the police to do a better job or to have better laws? To not have DUIs for people to not drink and drive? You have more bars, you create more opportunities. You have more gaming, you create more, uh, an opportunity for people to stay longer, to drink more. And if that's economic development, I think we need to do better on what our idea of economic development is. Say no, I'd vote no on, on a cap, on no cap. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Lori Hevde, and we own the Capri Bar. I had no plans on speaking, so here I am. I would just like to say, I don't, I really don't feel like this is an issue of there's, there needs to be more bars in town and lifting the caps. I think if there's an issue in, that we need more bars in town, then just add more license, keep the fees, don't hurt the people who have paid and are still paying for their liquor license. And if you feel the need to do that, then reimburse them for the entire license that they paid for.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, Nick Geis, Broadway Liquor. I just want to point out that there are currently a few licenses for sale right now. So to drive the economy and the market possibly, I think if that were a viable argument, then we wouldn't currently have any for sale right now. We would be at our cap with nobody wanting to sell. So I just think that's something to consider is that there are licenses for sale that nobody's purchasing, so removing the cap wouldn't necessarily help that any. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Well, sorry, Arnie's 2.0. I've listened and I've read and I've heard, heard what people in the city are saying and stuff. And I consider myself an entrepreneur. I think anybody that knows me would say that. And I don't come from tons of money, but I come from a family that works hard. And everybody that owns a bar can tell you has worked hard at it. From throwing obnoxious people out, to trying to get decent people to work for you, to paying all the, the taxes that we do pay for it. No disrespect, Josh, but I'm from South Carolina. And Charleston is not Minot, North Dakota, and it never will be. And Minot, North Dakota is not Charleston. We are in the middle of nowhere. We have a population that's under 50,000. We're still considered rural America. As much as we've tried and pushed not to be that, we're still that. And you're, you're trying to take away my retirement, and I don't appreciate it. And you're trying to take away the ability for me to sell my product or my, my business, and then the person after me to sell the business. I don't like that. And so, yeah, we're standing here and, yeah, we're pissed off, with good reason. There are liquor licenses available. And I'm not going to name names of people that I think would want them, but let them do what we did. If you want something, get it, but don't get it at the cost of other people. It's not fair. At the end of the day, it's just not fair. And we, we don't need more bars. And honestly, I don't think more bars would come into it. I think there's other reasons behind it. There's other reasons for paying $5,000 for a liquor license, other than opening a bar. There's other things you can do with it. There's other ways to manipulate, manipulate it and make money. And to screw over the 32 people or businesses, I think it's 32, is that right, Michaela?
Correct.
Businesses in town that have put their energy, their money, their lives on hold. If you own a bar, you don't own a bar, that bar owns you. And for you, for you to come in and all of a sudden, let's lift the liquor, liquor caps, that makes no sense to us. And that's why you're getting pushback, because it makes no sense at the end of the day. We're less than 50,000 people. There's a lot of things people can do to, to, if they're wanting to start a restaurant, there's restaurant license. I think the public don't understand our licens tiers. And they don't, they don't understand that there's, there's liquor license, which are the full license, and then you've got restaurant license, and then you've got beer and wine license. And do you know that Minot, North Dakota has more license than any other city in North Dakota? Any other city. That includes Fargo, who is much more people than us. So I think we need to take a step back and understand that. And I have no problem with Kevin Black, but in that committee, what you should have done is got somebody that had a full liquor license, because Kevin don't have a full liquor license. Kevin has a restaurant license, and you should have maybe pulled one of them, somebody else. There's 32 people you could have went to other than Adam, and you could have pulled us in and let us put our input into it. And you might have got a better perspective of what's going on. Just my opinion.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this topic? Last call. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Chair, I, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Alderman Janzer, did you get a, a vote? Oh, there we go. Motion passed unanimously.
So is there any direction that the council wants to give to staff at this point following the public hearing? Alderman, bless them.
Um, I, you know, for me, after hearing from, from some of the owners, after hearing some of the public comment tonight, more than anything, I think we need time. Right now, I'm not prepared to, to, to ask staff to bring us a final proposal, because I think there were some things raised for me tonight that give me some pause about other ways of, of approaching this. And so I don't know whether that's a, a tabling motion that we want now. I, I think we don't need to do anything, actually. We can just put it on a following agenda when we're ready for that. So I, and I guess that's, that's my thought. Some of the, some of what was brought tonight raises a couple of questions for me that I want to flesh through with some that, someone that knows a little more than I do. And so that, that would be my thought, is that we don't take any action tonight. We digest what we've heard, and we start up again perhaps sometime in June with a discussion again headed towards an ordinance update. Because I want to be clear as well, and, and the city attorney and Paul, you can, you can reinforce this, there are other pieces to what you guys worked on. There, there are cleanup things that we are going to want to do to make sure our ordinances are in shape regardless of what this decision is. So I don't want to derail that completely, obviously, but I do think we want to, we want to give ourselves some time.
Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Chairman Olson. No, I, I agree. I think this is, this is the first step. And, and what I'd like to see is, is for this body to take the committee approach to where we did have this conversation over a number of meetings. You know, again, we can sit up here and talk all day and talk with each other and talks among staff, you know, on, on these ideas, but we also have to hear from the license holders. If it's a hard no, then it's a hard no. Otherwise, we're just negotiating with ourselves. So we need to hear if there is a path forward, because at the end of the day, you know, and I, and I had some ideas, I do have some other ideas on, 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 on how to move this forward, whether it's with a cap or, 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 or some other form. I had some, some statements prepared. I'll kind of, I'll kind of read kind of my closing thoughts on this, because I think it still applies. But I deeply value and respect the voices of my fellow council members and, and the people of this community. We were elected to serves, to serve. We were not elected to serve special interests or preserve the status quo. We were chosen to lead with vision, courage, and integrity. There is a path forward, I believe, one that champions small businesses, empowers entrepreneurs, and cuts through unnecessary red tape. This path is not about consolidating power, it's about returning this power to the people. And let's do what we were elected to do. Let's, let's work together to craft bold, effective economic policy, policy that is pro-growth, pro-business, pro-entrepreneurship, anti-overregulation, and firmly, firmly rooted in freedom. Policy that I believe serves the best interests of Minot and its citizens, not a small group. With that being said, again, I think it's the right approach to push this to, I think we're going to have some people gone at our next meeting, push this to the first meeting in June. Let's have these discussions. Let's have open dialogue. Let's, let's see if there is a path forward. But, and, and again, I, I've, through some of the, through some of the, the feedback we've heard of just this getting out into the council agenda, yes, the committee agenda, in my opinion, was transparent. There was communication with, with license holders. They were notified of meetings. Every single meeting was open for, for feedback. You, you have these, you know, item one and item two are, are the opposite sides of the spectrum, right? We can leave the cap in place and do nothing, we can remove the cap and, and provide no compensation, right? Those are the two sides. And then there's all of this gray area in between. And if there is a resolution within that gray area and we can move that forward, I want to have that discussion. And, and, and I want to see us work, because at the end of the day, there's clearly 31, I think, active license holders, 32 licenses out there that, that, this is a scary conversation to have, and I get that. But I, I would, I would venture to say that I can find 32 people in the community that don't believe businesses should be capped. 32 business owners that believe their businesses shouldn't be protected by government. I understand that there was, there was exorbitant prices paid for these, but also at the end of the day, outside of the four that were auctioned off, those were private sales. Those were, those were sales between individuals. And I'm not trying to pass the buck, but the city approves a transfer, they don't approve the price. I can't buy a piece of equipment from a private seller, depreciate it, and use it for 30 years to generate revenue for myself, and then go back to the dealership and demand a full refund. Things change. And, and that's, I'm, I'm sensitive to that. This memo that we received about the political green light, right? The legal green light to move forward with the conversation of removing the cap, to know that, hey, maybe this is possible. That really wasn't for the committee. That was just key, committee, go to work, keep doing what you're doing, keep working on improvements, keep coming up with ideas. That memo was for this body. That memo was for us, because this is a policy decision. And, and call it what it is, there, there may be monetary aspects to it, but more than anything, it's a political one. It is. It's polarizing, it's political, we've all had our ears bent about this, some of us have been meeting with bar, bar owners about this. I get it. So again, I want to take all that feedback, not only from license holders, I value that. I, I, I get it. You've worked for your business, I've worked for my businesses, and I'll, I'll address it. Anthony, when my mom and dad bought that building, my dad was alive. And the fact that my mom's name and the integrity of my name has been drug through the mud, I'll be completely honest, shame on you. Ryan Ackerman had absolutely nothing to do with this committee meeting. And then you wonder why people don't want to engage in our community, why they don't want to be on a committee, because they have absolutely nothing to do with these things and their names get drug through the mud. Okay? Kevin Black was, I, I asked Kevin Black to be on this committee. I reached out to him. And then his name gets drug through the mud to try to benefit our community. That is a crock. This is what happens when people don't have an argument and they just sling mud. It's disgusting.
The public hearing has closed.
So again.
The public hearing has closed.
I'll leave my comments at that. I'm, I'm willing and I'm, I'm excited to have this conversation with the governing body and my colleagues to see if there's a path forward, because I do believe in free markets and entrepreneurship.
Alderman, bless them.
Thank you, Alderman Olson. I, I'd mentioned this to you before, and I, I wanted to ask you, is, is it appropriate as the chair for me to, to read this fast statement?
Yes.
That I missed in the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. So this statement, again, not, not my, not my words, this was sent, actually sent to all of us. But I'm going to read it, because Jim, Jim Soltes was not able to be here tonight. His wife, Vicki, is, is recovering from some medical issues, and so he was not able to be here. So here's what Jim said, it's just a couple of quick sentences. Dear council members, this will be my, my last email, and he did send us a few, about the liquor license issue. Nobody protected me when three other businesses went into competition with me. Also, nobody protected me when an employee of mine who I trained and provided a good living for decided he wanted to go into competition with me. Not a darn thing I could do about it. Minot simply cannot be a city of protectionism. We or you simply cannot be the avenue to stop competition by putting a cap on liquor licenses. Council members, it is your job to treat all citizens fairly, not just a few who could control an industry. I don't give a darn, nor do I feel sorry for those that have had a city liquor license for years and have included that license as part of the value of his or her business. They have had it this way for decades, and it is time to stop this unfair business practice with the protection from the city of Minot. You must agree that if the shoe were on your feet and you wanted to go into the bar business or any other business that included a liquor license, the answer would be too bad for you. Don't forget the possibility of many new employees having jobs with new businesses. Jim Soltes.
Alderman Fuller.
Yes, thank you. So I was one of the guys, I met with a bunch of the bar owners, I met with the attorneys from Marketplace. And, you know, I mean, I know we're going to have this discussion in the future, but there's a couple of things I want to address. And, and we keep talking about caps and barriers to entry and entrepreneurship. This is a federally regulated substance. Like, there's the ATF, the state, and the city, we all regulate it. Like, and the reason it's regulated is for public safety reasons. Like, you know, we talk about, you, you said, what other businesses in Minot? Jim Soltes brings up, you know, there was, there was nobody protecting him. That's not a regulated business, what Jim did. You know, the other things that I want to point out is, look at all the things in the state of North Dakota and the city of Minot that we regulate, caps. Do we allow strip clubs and dirty bookstores in Minot? No, because we've made that decision, we don't want them. The other things that are regulated, the state says we can only have eight cannabis dispensaries across the state. Why are they doing that? Why are they regulating that? Because it's a regulated substance. Look at the ATF. Like, I couldn't own a liquor license and have my federal firearms license at the same time, because they regulate that. I moved, I closed my business out there, I still have my federal firearms license, but the city of Minot says I can't sell guns out of my house. We regulate things all the time. We choose who can and can't in a certain degree in regulated industries, it's what it is. You know, you want to talk about contractors, Paul, journeymen electricians, journeymen plumbers, they have to go four years before the state will give them a license. They have to get continuing education credits, they have to follow rules and laws. I mean, we regulate things all the time, it is not a cap. I got into the, the firearms business, and it cost me a crap ton of money to get into it, right? Wasn't fair, but the ATF said, hey, if you want to do certain things, you got to do it our way. And so I did it their way. And, and these guys right here have been doing it the way the city of Minot set it up however long ago, and they have been following those rules. So while I am the first person to say we need to deregulate things and we need to be open for business, Minot is not open for business in all aspects of this that we were talking about. Now, we have got 31, 32 licenses in the city of Minot, there are five of them available. There's three bars for sale, and there's two others that have come back to the city of Minot. If there's five licenses available, why would we need to uncap it? Or is it four? Am I mistaken, Michaela? Is there just the epic one that came back to us? Or is there another one?
We actually haven't gotten that one yet. So there's 31 active licenses, and then there's one license that the council has approved a contingency until July 1 of 2025. So there's 32 open licenses, and then the one from the tracks that will come back to the city July 1.
Right. So pardon me, then, there's, there's four opportunities right now to buy a liquor license in the city of Minot, if you want one and you want to open a bar. I just, I have such a hard time hearing that we're a barrier to entrepreneurship and growth and everything else. We limit a lot of things in this city that we would probably other cities have, but we've chosen not to. Now, the other argument I keep hearing is Fargo and Grand Forks did this, they uncapped it. Fargo and Grand Forks are very different cities than Minot. Minot is a, is a shrinking city, where those two are growing. Minot is a shrinking city where those two are growing, and they're both college-driven towns that have a huge college nightlife that are demanding more bars. We don't see that here in Minot. Now, one of the other cities, Bismarck, we don't ever hear much about that, but Bismarck has a cap, just like we have. And guess what? They have no intention of removing it. They like how it works, and honestly, you know, I mean, the arguments that I keep hearing, I just, I don't feel those are really valid arguments, because we are not stopping anybody in the city of Minot from opening a bar. All you have to do is go buy a liquor license from one of the people that owns one, or the city one that's coming back to us, and you can open your bar. So, I don't know, this is going to be a hard discussion, but until we can figure out how to make it fair to all of these folks that have played by the rules, I don't know how we can do uncapping as a thing in this city, quite honestly.
Alderman, bless him.
A question for the city attorney. You're understanding the ordinance right now, and Paul, you may have dug it in there enough to know this too. If Minot were shrinking, and let's say we shrunk to 38,000 people, would we, through attrition, pull those licenses back today?
No.
So they're ratcheting as the city grows, is that the idea?
So when we gain a license, you're not, that license is going to stay. So if the population should shrink 20, 30, 50,000 people, we wouldn't pull licenses away from people, those licenses would still exist.
If I can continue, not even through attrition? So as the next census came, if there were five open licenses at the time, we wouldn't pull those back?
No, because it's presently written, it contains that de feasible property interest language, so we wouldn't pull those back. As long as they're being validly used, they're in compliance with our ordinances, there's no issues with a regulatory reason why we would pull it from, just like we would any other owner, we wouldn't pull back the number.
Alderman Fuller.
Thank you. And just one other thing, Paul, and you've said it a couple of times, that they can depreciate their licenses and make money off them. This isn't a piece of equipment, it's an intangible asset, and you cannot depreciate an intangible asset through the IRS or on your taxes. So it's a little bit different than a piece of equipment, I just, I wanted to point that out.
Any further comments? I will add a comment in as we've talked about when we want to take action on this. It would certainly be my preference, I will not be making the motion tonight, but it'd be my preference that we do not take action on this until we have a full council with seven members, which will happen at some point in 2025, but we're unaware of that date. Is there a motion that anyone would like to make at this time regarding this agenda Mr. City Manager?
Just, just for points of clarity, it was mentioned earlier with regards to some of the differences of opinion on whether or not even this public hearing should have been on tonight's agenda. So staff would appreciate some direction from council on when you would like this on an agenda again in the future, so that staff doesn't get caught in the middle between differing opinions amongst the council on whether or not it should be on agenda and when.
Alderman, bless him.
Well, I guess, you know, Vice President Olson, keeping your thoughts in mind, which I agree with, I think having a full seven-member council for something this big is probably the right way to go. At an absolute minimum, we couldn't take that action then until, what would it be, August 20th, maybe? That would be, and that's assuming that the public doesn't decide that they want an election for the open council seat, which is their right, if they choose to do that. So, and if that occurs, we're talking February, something like that. So, but I agree, I think that that is the right thing. So to the city manager's point, do we want to, do we want to start those discussions back up, maybe with that second meeting in August? Because we will have the mayor's election complete, it's possible that that could fill this dais again. And if it does, we're right back to seven, and that would seem to me to be the next appropriate time, with your thoughts in mind of making sure we have seven.
Michaela?
I could be wrong, but I'm not even sure if the August, I believe it's an August 18th meeting would be the one where we could seat, because, Dave, if I'm wrong, let me know, but don't we still have to do the canvas board, and that's 13 days after the election? So the canvas board has to approve, so you might be looking at the first meeting in September?
Yeah, which will, the first will be Labor Day, I believe. So would we be looking at the second, I believe, is what it would look like? So I guess that would be my thought, is that we target the second as a placeholder, but we've also got to see what the election does.
Are you making that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, I think that would be best.
Second. The discussion.
So would the September 2nd date be a target for first reading of the ordinance? Or just to revisit the discussion?
I think, my opinion, if I could, I think it's the next step in the discussion. I don't even know that we're ready for a first reading, because what I hope all of us do, which is where I intend to go, I mean, this raised, this raised different questions. And to be clear to everybody, I've been pretty clear on this, and I'm still clear that removing the caps makes the most sense. That is the right path, but there were questions that were raised in my mind tonight that make me think of this slightly differently. So I want to use these couple of months to figure that out and to work my way through that. So I think, I think the discussions should start up again then, and if that night we get to a proposal that we can bring as a motion to direct staff to draft, I think that's where we would be.
Second agrees.
Second agrees.
A miscellaneous in discussion item for the September 2nd meeting.
Correct.
Any further comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
So anticipating that maybe some of you will be leaving us now, you're all welcome to stay, we are going to take a five-minute recess to allow some movement within the room, and we will adjourn in five minutes, or come back together in five minutes. I can have everyone take their seats. And I will call this meeting back to order. Thank you, our meeting is called back to order, and we will move on to Agenda Item Six, which is our consent agenda. I am unaware of any items being pulled, so with that, is there a motion?
I would move to approve the consent items.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, we will move on to Action Item 7.1, the Minot Police Department and Minot State University Criminal Justice Partnership. What are the wishes of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any comment? Alderman, bless him.
So Harold, or if you've got, if Dale wants to talk about it, could we get a summary of where we're at now? Because it's a little different than what was originally proposed, because there were some adjustments that were needed.
The manager?
Yes, Chairman Olson and Alderman Blessam, Dale can intervene as well. In the process of talking with staff and putting a lot of this together, ultimately, one of the main challenges we had was if we were to reimburse housing costs, how that would be considered from an IRS standpoint with regards to wages and those kinds of things, and in an effort to try and get this program up as quickly as possible, so that Minot State can begin recruiting students into this program and for their fall classes. And we also determined that we felt that the incentives that we were providing without housing would be enough to be an attractive program anyway, that we elected to pull the housing reimbursement out. We also assumed that if we're recruiting students in their junior and senior year, they probably already have housing lined up and have figured out how to pay for that. And so, taking on the tuition and books and creating the part-time CSO positions to help alleviate some of the pressure off of our full-time police officers or sworn officers, that that was sufficient to go forward. And so, the main change is pulling the housing out, that we would not be paying for the housing for these students participating in this program. And I'll turn it over to Captain Plessis if there's anything else that I missed in that summary.
Captain Plessis?
I think you touched on everything I was going to talk about, so.
Perfect.
Do you have any other questions for me?
Any questions for Captain Plessis?
Well, just for Harold, or possibly even Dave, so, the, just, I just want to make sure I understand the part-time employees. I understand the dollars are all there, because we've got authorized within the police department. Can you help me understand a little bit how we're treating the actual FTEs? You know, one of the things I always get concerned about is, you know, we're calling them part-time, sort of temporary in a way, I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't hire 14, I wouldn't think. We've got a dollar amount, so we've got an idea of how many of those would be. It's also, I think, not meant to be perpetual, so we would see how it goes, and if it's going good, it might make sense to keep doing it. So can you just talk a little bit about how the FTEs are going to be dealt with in the budget and how we should be thinking about those in the counts and things like that? And just to add, one of the main reasons to look at it that way is, when we have things like admin staff, whether it's HR or others, the bulk of the city adds to the burden, right? So that many more employee IDs means at some point we need another HR specialist. And so, I just want to make sure I load it into my mind the right way.
The manager, or Captain Plessis?
Yeah, Vice President Olson and Alderman Blessam. They're not, they're not full-time employees, they're part-time. We're looking at, they're going to be community service officers until they graduate, and then they would transition into full-time, but they would transition into police officer positions what are open right now. It's no different than us hiring police officers into those positions. So, until, until they actually graduate, they would be on a 20-hour-per-week basis as part-time employees, basically supplementing law enforcement activities.
Hope I can continue. So the idea then in my mind is, so let's say we hire four, we get some great candidates, we have four people coming in, we're adding four CSO, or two CSOs, two CSO FTEs onto the ranks of the city. And so I just want to make sure I've got that all clear, because it's that general idea, we are, we are adding to the size of our staff. Right now, we're short officers, so dollars-wise, that can all work out. And presumably, if things went fabulous and we get fully staffed and we don't have a hard time getting officers anymore, we might shrink our CSO ranks a little bit again. Because I'm not sure we need that many CSOs long-term, okay? Is that?
Alderman Olson and Alderman Blessam, you're exactly correct. This program is designed to be fluid based on the vacancies and the needs of the police department. And so, as this program continues, and this is a long-term strategy, right? And, and so as we continue to hopefully whittle away at the open vacancies that we have and sworn officers, at the council's discretion through the budget process every year, we would have the ability to decrease the amount of these, what you termed like a temporary CSO position, that is designed to be this transition from student to CSO to sworn officer. And so, again, as we fill those ranks and we get quality police officers on, and we've kind of settled that down and get down to where instead of having 13 to 15 vacant positions, we're down to six or seven, then we can determine how many students we need to recruit through this program and how many of them we would give this CSO opportunity. So it's designed and meant to be fluid based off of how many vacancies we have, but in essence, what we're doing is we're exchanging vacant, full-time sworn officer positions to fund this program. And then as we, again, as we fill up our full-time positions, we can scale back on this program.
And just, just one final point then, I've been a proponent of this all along, I like the idea of getting people sooner. You know, in our office, we just hired another junior at Minot State who's going to graduate next spring. I think this is a great approach, and I think it's a well-thought-out plan.
Any further questions? Alderman Samuelson?
I'm curious for the amount that's on here, how many students is that?
If I remember correctly, the original calculation was the full-time cost of about four students a year. But as is mentioned in the memo, there is a state program, a career builders program, where the state will also fund 50% of the tuition. But what we proposed here was assuming that the city would have to bear the full cost. And so, the city would then have the option, then assuming that the state is participating, is, we could move that up to four to eight students, if there's enough. if there's enough students interested in the program and we have the ability to administratively support that many students on the police side. Or we can do less, and then the city would not be spending the full budgeted amount that is being asked for tonight in the budget amendment.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Captain Plessis. Seeing no other questions or comments, please cast your vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to Action Item 7.2, the Broadway Circle Subrecipient Award. Let's get a motion, then we'll have information from Mr. Plank. Do you have a motion?
I would move that we accept the staff recommendation.
Second.
Plank.
Alderman Olson and members of council. Very happy to be here tonight. It's been a process I think we all can attest to. Just a little brief update on the Broadway Circle construction process. Right now, all of the inspections have been done for Building C, which is the seventeen-unit LMI complex. The certificate of occupancy will be issued either late this week or middle of next week. There was some siding work and some landscaping that needed to be done. So that is in process. There is also some striping for the parking lot, and some of the entrances do need to be repoured, not at the city's expense, due to ADA compliance issues. So with that being said, we did re-release an RFP to manage the property back in January. And we received two offers, one from People's First and one from Pathfinder Services of North Dakota. One of them, People's First submitted one to manage the LMI apartment complex only. And then Pathfinder Services of North Dakota submitted a proposal to manage all three, the commercial space, the family homeless shelter, as well as the LMI apartment complex. We had a committee made up of City Manager Stewart, Alderman Blessam, Finance Director Dave, Lakefield and myself. We reviewed the proposals, we had interviews with both organizations, and we felt that Pathfinder Services of North Dakota was the most, the better fit for this project. They do bring over thirty-eight years of experience with homelessness, with running different types of shelters. So it's a perfect fit. So I bring the proposal to you tonight to move ahead, formulate the subrecipient agreement, and bring that back to council for your approval and so that we can have Pathfinder Services run the project for the affordability period of twenty years. And I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you.
All right.
Okay. All right. No further comments or questions?
So just a couple of quick comments. You know, I'm glad to see us, I believe, in a good position to move forward with this. This has been a difficult process, even from where I was, got onto the council and started being part of this. I know that there was difficulties before that. I do feel comfortable with the proposal that we got, that there's experience here, there's HUD experience. There's, I think that the team that they've got is well-positioned to bring this forward. I believe is as well-positioned as we can expect. And at this point, we face twenty years of being under the thumb of the federal government to make sure that this is done right, and this represents the best option that we've got to move forward. And so I would urge my colleagues to agree with this and move it forward so that we can hopefully get a contract put in place.
Any further comments? Alderman Samuelson?
So this proposal, is this a lease to own?
And if others on the team can help answer the question, I'll give it my first shot. I think, if I remember our discussions correctly, the long-term part of that is very difficult to deal with from a HUD perspective and from other perspectives. So while I don't believe a contract would close the door to that at the end in any way, shape, or form, it also isn't necessarily written in upfront because that's not in the interests of the city or HUD in that matter. Chris, did I get that right?
Right. Vice President Olson, Alderman Blessam, and Alderman Samuelson. Yes, they have proposed five thousand dollars to lease it for five thousand dollars a month until the reserves are paid off for the city. And then it would be a lease to own for those twenty years.
Any further questions? Thank you again. Any other comments? Seeing none? Ready to cast our vote?
The motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will be moving on to Agenda Item Eight, which is personal appearances. And I'm going to put my teacher hat on for a moment. I'm a retired teacher and a retired school administrator. And sometimes things need to be repeated. So if you heard it once, you already know it. If you are new, if you're just joining us, just a couple of guidelines for our public comment. We are following Robert's Rule of Order as our guide. Everyone should remember that public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to inform the governing body about their views. The meeting in which the public comments are allowed still is run by the governing body with clear, concise guidelines in place. The chair will determine if the comments are outside of the purview of this meeting. Unless otherwise specified, public comment is considered a one-way communication. It is not intended to serve as a debate or a question-and-answer period. Public comment from any one person is limited to five minutes. And I'm grateful for all the people that followed that earlier. A stopwatch is viewable on the screen. If the governing body wishes to extend the time to a speaker, an affirmative vote must be taken. The speaker's time may not be yielded to another speaker. The unused time from a speaker is transferred back to the governing body. Comments should be related to a topic that falls under the authority of this governing body. Campaigning for any political office or a specific candidate is not acceptable. And comments from the same sentiment or belief should be kept concise to allow for the meeting to move forward efficiently. And I appreciate all of you following those guidelines. So with that, our public appearances are open to our first speaker.
Council members. Alderman Fuller. When you spoke at the special meeting on April first, 2025, you said that Minot has been a city that neighbors build a true sense of belonging for everybody. You said that the leadership of our city is not merely a title, but a profound sense of responsibility to serve with integrity, to make decisions that reflect the values and the needs of our community, unite and elevate the people that we lead, especially in hardship. True leadership is not about avoiding the storm, it's about guiding our city through it with unwavering resolve and transparency. Effective leaders have the ability to inspire, uplift, and lead others in those challenging and uncertain times. They empower those with their voices, listen with humility, and make decisions rooted in integrity. We have needed that leadership in Minot. As a city, we have been unable to find it. Minot deserves leaders that truly embody these principles. When I came to city council after having not been here for some time for medical reasons, when I came into this room, chambers, this table was to the side. This table is here because the podium does not meet ADA requirements. I had to use the podium because this does not have an HDMI cable. When I come into this room, it reminds me of segregation in the nineteen fifties, where there was a fountain for whites only and another for blacks. That's what this room reminds me of. From the perspective of what the city of Minot leads in, for me is reversing DEI. From my perspective, we otherwise follow in the state in the intention that you have with no cap for alcohol licenses. We lead in high school sports. The high school teacher's character counts. At the end of the city council meeting on April twenty-first, Alderwoman Olson, you stated that roughly at least ten very inaccurate statements were made and that we don't really have the ability to correct them, nor do our staff have the ability to refute them. And that makes me very uncomfortable. You encouraged anyone to reach out to get answers and to look into those things that are bothersome and to get accurate information. I approached you after the meeting and asked if it was a concern that I had addressed that was inaccurate. You said no. I addressed that you had stated at a prior city council meeting that if businesses wanted to be accessible, rather than addressing that ADA and the ACLU say that businesses are required by law to be accessible. I'm concerned that my presence addressing city council, I'm concerned that my presence addressing city council with my concerns, you being one of the six, you're either not paying attention, it was not alarming to you, or you stand by what you said, which is most concerning. I addressed concerns about ADA requirements concerning the city manager Harold Stewart, the city engineer Minot Parks, Ackerman Asphold, and the Suris River Joint Board. I asked if anyone had any questions when I finished speaking. I understand now by Robert's Law that it's a different interaction. The city is not doing this. It's by belonging for everybody. It's not happening with the city council. It's not happening by the actions of the city manager, and it's not happening by city staff. My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
President, member of city council, my name is Jedediah Raider. And I just want to talk to you tonight about our great retirees we have in the city of Minot. We have so many great people who are over the age of sixty-two and a half, sixty-three, and they've done so much work for this community. They were the builders, the electricians, that have really worked so very hard to make sure and really hand us the keys for the city that we enjoy today. But I'm very concerned because with the price of inflation, with the price of everything that has doubled in the past four years, I'm finding more and more of our great retirees that are really getting crushed by inflation. And I know there's a way to help them, and so I would ask the city council to do so. Let me give you a couple of real-life examples that our great retirees are facing. I know of a person who works third shift. Wait a second, he's retired. He's working third shift, in my opinion. That's one of the hardest shifts to do. You're up two, three, four in the morning just to try to work, to get the money, to, you know, pay the bills and stuff. And it's not that these people haven't prepared, but he's working third shift to make sure, with the price of inflation and everything, that he's still meeting all the bills. It takes a lot of grit and determination for that. And I really appreciate his example. But if you look at some of these people, let's pretend, you know, twenty years ago, if you had forty, fifty thousand dollars coming in a year, man, you were set. You're like, yes. And with a lot of these retirees, that's what they had. But look at what inflation's done. Look at what it's done. It's absolutely destroying their budgets, and I know we can help them. So for example, if, let's say, they are making forty thousand dollars a year off their retirement. And for example, I know of a situation where they're paying over three thousand dollars, over three thousand dollars in property tax still, after it's been reduced because they're retired and all that stuff. So if you take that and put that in percentage, that's over eight percent, over eight percent of their annual income in one item, property tax. When their property is already paid for, when they shouldn't have anything else to pay for, they're getting raked over the coals for another eight percent on property taxes. Now, I do know the state decided to do something. They're going to kick back more money to help relieve property taxes, so that's great. But I'm really asking city council to really consider this. I know of some of our great retirees that have moved out of state because they're like, I don't want to live in Minot anymore. They went to South Dakota, bought a place, paid cash for it. They're done, and then they'll come up back up here when they want to. I've known other great retirees that moved out of the city, maybe fifteen minutes, half hour, forty-five minutes because it's cheaper to live outside of our city. So I would ask, because these are the great people who literally handed us the keys to the city, who were the electricians, you know, the people who laid bricks, and all these great hard workers that we take care of them. So I would ask the city council, when they consider their budget this year, with also what the state is kicking in, that we start from a zero-based budget again this year. And then I would ask that we look at how that department would run if we had an eight percent decrease, a sixteen percent decrease, and a twenty-five percent decrease. What would that department look like? Would that department still run? Would there be, is there things in that department we can cut that are not essential? What can we do? And I would respectfully ask that all that money be put towards helping cover property taxes one hundred percent for any of our retirees. They're getting crushed. No one's coming to save them. No one, except for you. So I would ask the city council that this year, when you do your budget, you look at that and cover property taxes one hundred percent for them because no one's coming to save them. It's just us.
Thank you. Next speaker? Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
I guess I'm still a resident. I'm still in the process of moving. I'm Charles Tull. I listened to all these spending things at this city council. I remember when we first changed the city council and thought we were going to make some big differences. And yeah, I still see, oh, sorry about that. I still see the issues of spending and taxes in Minot. And it's like, I apologize. It just hasn't ended. When we went, I think we went from a fifty-three-million-dollar budget before the flood to a hundred million. And I understood why it went to a hundred million. I understood that. You know, we had a lot of cleanup, a lot of stuff going on. But we kept going up. Now we're at two hundred million. We got a landfill. I watched the trucks going up and down that road towards, past the hospital. I don't think anybody even knows what's going on there. I mean, there's some serious, heavy trucks going down there, and sixty percent of that garbage isn't even in Minot's. And I don't know why nobody's looking at that. It's going to be within eight hundred yards of that hospital when they get done expanding that thing. Why aren't we looking to go outside further, working with the county? Instead of, it's not a moneymaker. Not when you look at the unfunded pension liability. I don't think people realize how much we're spending on employees and unfunded pension liability. That's the real killer that you guys are going to have to face sooner or later. If anybody understands what unfunded pension liabilities in North Dakota are going to be, they're big, they're huge, they're billions of dollars. And I just don't see it. And I see people that are running for, you know, mayor and all this, and it seems like it's the same old, same old stuff. And I don't understand why we can't do the same things over and over and keep expecting a different result. And it's just, I'm hoping that some people will start looking at the things that are, you know, the water, the NOS. You know, we're just spending money on flood control. You can go to Grand Forks, you can go to Fargo, and billions of dollars is being spent on flood control. And no one really knows if any amount of water that we had in the flood that we had here is going to be preventing, the walls are going to prevent that from happening again. But we're spending more and more money every year, and it just doesn't end. And I just, I hope that we can see a different direction. Minot, I love Minot. This was my first home in North Dakota. It always had a special place for me. You know, I just want to see things different. Instead of spending, we got to start looking out for the people of Minot. Instead of spending, we gotta start looking out for the people of Minot. And in the police department, that's a big problem too, and it always has been, it always has been. I mean, when I'm, I was doing a petition for the landfill. You know, I, I got stopped by the police over in a public park for petitioning. And it's just, there's, it seems to be this, this culture in the police department of Minot, this, but I see it in Bismarck too. I don't know if it's the local police that's going out of control. You know, it's, it's happening everywhere I see that, with the local police departments. And it's a problem, and we don't need to keep growing it. Minot is not growing, folks. You don't need more police here, you just don't. You don't need to spend more money. We never needed a SWAT team, it's just, it didn't make any sense. You can tell some of these old people, oh, crime's up. It's not up, the real numbers aren't up, we're not growing, we're, we're pretty stagnant. And I think David Hoag said that in a conversation we had a few weeks ago. Minot's stagnant. So I just want to let everybody know that I'm endorsing and supporting Josiah Royce for mayor. Thank you.
And Mr. Tuttle, just as a reminder, we are not campaigning during public appearances. Next speaker, please. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
My name's Josiah Royce. I did want to say that I agree with what Charles said and what Jedediah said. The money, I do know a lot of people that live outside the city limits of Minot, and they don't want to live in Minot because their taxes are so much lower, just because they're just barely outside of the city. But even at that, people that are, went just barely outside of city limits, you know, they're still affected by city jurisdiction, but they can't vote in city elections. That's another point of, you know, something that maybe should be looked at. They can't vote, but they're still under jurisdiction. Police is a good example, the police can still go to their house, but they can't vote for the people that are in charge of the police, which is the council, the mayor. They can't do that. Also, I wanted to address something, maybe you guys could clear it up. I've heard the rumor that even though the former chief has been fired, that we're still paying his pension. Is that true? Okay, no answer? I think that'd be an important thing. But also to credit about just too big a government, too much government, too many things that are punishable by government, without including much for detail. I was out of town today at a, to appear at a friend's court trial, where he was being tried for disorderly conduct for leaving a note on somebody's windshield because they didn't like the note. And they're taking him all the way through a jury trial, expensive jury trial, mind you, or this thing that's taken almost a year to get through. I think that's pretty absurd. It's like, you guys have heard me talk about common law before, you've heard other people come in here recently. The last time I was here, another gentleman came in and talked about common law. If there's no victim, there's no crime. If there's no damage, there's no crime, there's no vandalism, there's no crime. So here we're talking about money and stuff, how much does the state, how much does the city spend on pursuing crimes that aren't really crimes, crimes that don't really do any harm? Things need to be really eval, reevaluated very strongly. You guys have heard me talk about the idea of a constitutional sheriff before, months ago, when, when Tom Ross was still sitting there. I came in, it was February third, if I'm not mistaken. And I told you guys about Sheriff Richard Mack, who beat the Clinton administration back in the nineteen nineties, instead of precedence for sheriffs having the option to say, hey, we're not enforcing that, it's unconstitutional. The proposition I made to you guys at that time was that instead of trying to put Humpty Dumpty back together with our broken police department and all the sham and all the stuff that's been happening with it, I haven't even finished reading all those reports, was it two thousand pages? Anyway, the point is, having a constitutional sheriff, take over and restructure the police department, transfer all of the police assets over to the constitutional sheriff, just makes the most sense, because they don't bother enforcing things that cost all of us so much money that nobody really freaking cares about, like a note on a windshield. Like, deal with it, we're adults, I've gotten one on my windshield before too. Someone wants me to park a little further away, whatever, I'm not gonna call the cops over it, make a big stink and make a big expense. So furthermore, I would just encourage everyone to look up Sheriff Richard Mack. It's easy to find on Google, on YouTube, the guy talks a lot of common sense, I wish he'd run for president someday. That's not campaigning, that's just a wish. But furthermore, in talking about the constitutional sheriff, if you think about it, it just makes too much financial sense. Because here in Ward County, Minot being the Ward County seat, the police department and the sheriff's department are so close together. You know, it's like they're both right here anyway. By consolidating those two and merging the two departments, we're cutting two, you know, a chief and a sheriff down to one. We're cutting two payroll departments down to one. We're cutting two, you know, insurance policies down to one, secretaries down, we're just consolidating things, and that would save a ridiculous amount of money every year. And as far as the, the push for these, I know you already got approved, but the, was it fourteen new officers? If you're not enforcing, like I said, unconstitutional things and pursuing all this stuff to really just keep the peace and keep safety and stuff, you don't need that many cops out on patrol burning up our gas, burning up the vehicles and the salaries. All the, all the insurance, everything that goes with it, it's a lot of money. You guys know better than I do how much money that is. And this is one way to save the people in Minot a lot of money, and a lot of, cut out a lot of nonsense. Since speaking out to you guys last few times, even more people have come out of the woodwork and come to me that are still not comfortable talking to all you. People that have had major problems, people that can't get help, not from lawyers or anybody, for the problems they face with the Minot PD. So what I'm proposing, what I'm pleading, regardless of how things turn out in the next two months, is that you guys actually look into and consider this. I'd really appreciate it. And furthermore, I just wanted to end with this, regarding that summer election, the August fifth election, it's just me and three members of City Council running, I'd like to propose that this is, since it's just a special election for the city, we do paper-only ballots. I think that'd be a good thing for the people in Minot to see. A lot of us want to get rid of these Dominion voting machines. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Last call. Seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, miscellaneous and discussion items. Nine point one is overview of the 2025 construction projects. Alderman City Engineer, come forward.
Great, thank you again, council. I just wanted to give a brief overview on a couple of services that our department provides to give information to our, to our residents. If you go to the city's main page here on our website, and you go to GIS, it's right on the, the homepage, you'll come to our, our GIS hub. And here you can see a listing of our most popular maps and apps that we put out for the public, for them to view. If you scroll down a little bit more, there's additional maps underneath some of these, these headings as well. So anybody can go to this, you don't need to log in or anything like that. We provide a lot of this information so that all of our public is informed. I wanted to talk about two in particular tonight, since construction is, is kicking off here in Minot. Our first is our Minot Construction Projects 2025 map. So our staff and engineering and public works keeps this map updated as, as our projects move on throughout the year. If you come to the, the front page here, under this tab, all of our construction projects are shown. If you want, if you're concerned only with maybe street or utility projects, you can click on these filters at the top, and that allows you to highlight certain types of projects. Also, if you zoom into a particular project, maybe it's in your neighborhood, and you click on, on these projects that are highlighted, it'll pull up a box, and this proj, or this information box gives you information about what the project is, who the contractor is, our completion dates, and then the city contact person. If you had questions on, on that project or wanted to voice a concern, you know how to get ahold of us. And then also the project status. So this will be updated as construction moves on, so people know exactly where this project is at. The other app that I wanted to show quickly was our traffic impact app. If you go to this, it shows various traffic impacts around the cities such as road and lane closures, and then also detour routes. So as a, for instance, if you would click on one of these, it gives you a description of what's happening and anticipated start and end dates. So this can vary a little bit, obviously, when the permits are submitted, we try to populate this. But as we all know, sometimes construction can slide a little bit, maybe the contractor couldn't get there, so these, these dates can move around a little bit on us, so. That's all I had to present to you tonight, council. I just wanted to make you and the public aware that we host these apps, and if you have questions, you can certainly go to our website, check these out. If there's other things you'd like to see, give the engineering department a call, and we'll check the feasibility of that. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the city engineer? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, city manager?
Not a question, but more of a comment, and, you know, having worked in several communities and states, and GIS is often a tool that we use, but I've never seen staff use it in this fashion to be a communicative and transparent source for the public with regards to construction projects. So I applaud your office and your staff that created this layer and the work that you do to keep it up to date. And I think it's just another example of efforts that city staff is making to provide this information in a very accessible way to our general public, so thank you.
Thank you. Anything else under miscellaneous and discussion items for any of the council members? Seeing none, move on to Agenda Item Ten.
All moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.